Hello everyone, my name is Cyrus Hojadi. We have here a county commission candidate Hunter Kane. Thank you so much for joining us. And the reason why we interviewed you is very simple. I think a lot of my viewers are not too satisfied with the way things have been going in the county, especially in the last two decades. And we know that this is perhaps the most important job for the state. If many of you don't understand that the local structure here is done very differently. And it's one of the reasons why I've advocated for breaking up the county or adding more commissioners, a whole lot of other things. But as you know, this is a very new area and these are not done in really tiny bits of counties. So you have roughly about three quarters of the population in one county of the states. It's very interesting to see. And just for the viewers who don't know, the strip is not part of the city limits. So there's about a majority of the people that do not live under a city jurisdiction. But other than that, I'd love to introduce Hunter Kane. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. And I think you kind of actually said it the best way also. You know, everything flows through the county. So when it comes to those services and then most of what people think of as Las Vegas is not, you know, part of, or let me say it the opposite way. Las Vegas is in Clark County, but Clark County is significantly larger than just Las Vegas. So the strip, parts of downtown, very little bit of it, you know, going all the way out into even inside some of the cities. There's a lot of county jurisdictions within the city, which is weird, which is all falls under the Clark County Commission.
Wow. Yeah, I know. It's just a lot of people don't know that. And even the residents that don't know that. And on the map, it will say Paradise, Spring Valley, but still nevertheless, the address is using the Las Vegas name. And that's one of the things, we'll get to that later on because it's the local system that's pretty dysfunctional. And I think that this area has grown and I think we've kind of outlived it. But can you tell me a little bit about yourself? About who you are? Why should we support you? Because before I begin, you know, in this channel, I think, I think more and more people should agree. We need to stop putting labels, okay? Because it's not about Democrat or Republican. It's that we, in this channel, we're mainly concerned about an establishment. We're concerned about just a handful of people that have so much power. And it's just giving a lot of folks out there just very little voice. You know, whether it is many different issues. And I think now they're starting to make preparation work for F1, which we'll get to that later. But could you tell us a little bit about like who you are, what you're running on? And pretty much going forward?
Yeah. So I will start off actually where you just left off. So you know, I agree with what you're saying with a lot of the different type of lack of choices. That's why I'm, you know, openly supporting here what they call ballot measure three, which is going to allow for open primaries and ranked choice voting. That's going to kind of take the politics out of politics and you're voting on the best person, which I love. Me on a personal level, you know, my journey kind of starts right after 2001, when the towers came down. I was one of those people that ran and joined the military the next month, you know, was shipping off to basic training. From there, I spent a decade in the US Army, you know, serving in Operation Iraqi Freedom and during Freedom New Dawn. When I got out, I went to go work for Congresswoman Deanna Titus, where I initially met you at. I was one of the staffers for Deanna Titus. And I want to say we met maybe 2014, 15 timeframe somewhere in there. But it was at her office, you know, where my love of duty even grew more than it already was. I became a CCSD educator. I became a foster parent. And here we are, you know, 2024, I've had 36 youth come through my home. Eleven of them are permanently mine. And you know, here's a sneak peek for some of your viewers, you know, June 10th, we'll have my 12th permanent one in my home. So
Wow.
Collection, I'll be in the courtroom, you know, having a new permanent son, which is really, really cool. So I will say a lot of this is, you know, the reason why I'm running for Clark County Commission. We have a lot of people out there who just kind of lip service. You know, when there was a shortage of teachers, you know, my competitors didn't sign up and do anything. They just give their thoughts and prayers. When it came time to, hey, we need fostering homes, thoughts and prayers. So a lot of times people just want to sit back and do nothing and say, it's not my responsibility. And I'm the exact opposite. You know, everything that you are talking about and have talked about, I'm going to hold to accountable. F1, okay, bring it on. Let's talk about it. When it comes to housing issues, come on, let's bring it. There is nothing I'm scared, scared to talk about.
Wow. You really have served this country. Only, I mean, goodness gracious. I mean, what more else can you do?
Oh, are you kidding me? So the things I haven't even talked about is I've started the Foster Care Chamber of Commerce. That is a nonprofit that is helping those that are 16 to 25 that are aging out of the foster care system with more services and resources. We created the Hunter Kane Foundation, which, you know, helps to target education and veterans in need. I mean, there's, we're, we're just getting started. Just getting started.
Yeah, it's just, that's, you know, I gotta know more about this foster care thing. Cause you know, it's just, there's so many different issues that I haven't had time to really look through it or experience it as a matter of fact. There's a lot of people who have an opinion of an issue, they've experienced it, they went through it. And
Exactly.
You know, it's just, it gets people, you know, cause I can tell you how I got into like one particular topic. Urban planning. Now, so you have your opponent, Bill Bray Axelrod, is that her name?
That's correct.
And I've seen her in the legislature, just the way she was, I just didn't feel very comfortable. I mean, I recall, and we have a video of this. She interrupted me when I brought up the, who was the CEO of that time, Mr. Murin, Jim Murin of MGM Resorts. And we don't have to get into a lot of things of what he did. But when he admits that we're the largest taxpayer in the state of Nevada, we changed laws. And when I bring that up and they have a problem because they don't like me bringing a proper name and individual and they shut me off. It's just like, are they really trying to literally shut off the, me off because of the rules? Or is it just because they're trying to hide something? But, but either way, it's, it's like, we don't have representation in Congress, in, well, yeah, Congress, because they do fund it too. And we don't have representation in county and state. But this what really gets to the heart of the problem. Now, you were living in Las Vegas before I was born, 1992. Obviously you were here in the 1970s and 80s, right?
You are dating me a little bit, but I hear you what you're trying to say.
Well, okay. Because at that time, we know the Vegas was run quite differently. We had different spheres running the system. Then all of a sudden, the super wealthy elites, it seems like they took over the casinos in the last 30, 40 years. They infiltrated the non-governmental organizations and politicians. And then this is why we have the mess that we have now. I guess so, because, and, and, and this is, and this is what I mean. And our local government structure is enabling that heavily on them. Do you think that is what's really the issue? And then of course, we got rid of unpaid finance laws, Citizens United and everything.
That's true too.
Yeah.
I, I think of, you know, our, our current legislator, legislation, you know, on all kinds of levels. Almost it seems like they're, they're retiring, retirement clubs. So it is, we have established a system as to which we know who's going to be in there. We know what they're going to do. We know what little changes, if any, they're going to make. And as long as we keep those people in power, you know, it's kind of status quo. Which is good for if you're wealthy, which is good if you're a stock, you know, holder, which is good if you own multiple businesses. It's not good for the average worker. So it's kind of like, you know, I've always, you know, I'm not going to call them out by names, but there are several media people I've spoken with where they are very much one issue people. And you know, I'm trying to bring up other different things. Okay, we have 3,400 youth. Can we talk about that, you know, in the foster care system? And it's like, no, let's talk about this. And it's like, okay, we have six other commissioners there that all give the same line. And they just want me to say the exact same line as everyone else. Almost as if they're looking for some type of, you know, hey, can you speak our language? And you know, I think
It's very scripted. That's what I tell a lot of people. Yeah.
That's what Shannon wants to do too. I mean, I, I don't want to, you know, bad mouth her, you know. She's, I guess, a generally nice person. I, I know of her, but I'm not really close with her. But what I will say is that, you know, if you asked her why she wants to be a commissioner, it's because she, you know, wants to spend more time with her daughter, you know, and not have to go up to Carson. Or she'll tell you, well, I think it'd be really good.
For to stop you.
That's what I'm personally believing. It's, you know, I can be a bit of a rabble rouser, you know, both the, the Democrats. You know, I am a Democrat and the Democrats, you know, understand that they can't really control me like they would probably like others. And at the same time, I get along with Republicans. So I think they just see it as a bad sign because it's supposed to be blue no matter who, you know, and it's not supposed to be, don't think about it, don't invest in who's the best person, let's just go with the party lines on both sides.
Tell me about it. Yeah. It, it's just the, and I, and I don't like to look at labels. Now I will point out that each side or whatever will have their strengths and weaknesses. And that's obvious.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that, and that is the thing. And I think, you know, in case, if many of you don't know, first of all, we, I, I tried to contact her. And I actually spoke to her too, the same time where we met. And I also invited April Becker to an interview and neither of them accepted. So this, this explains everything you need to know. Now either maybe they just think they're just too busy for me or whatever, but it's like, come on. You could just
It's because they know you're going to ask tough questions.
You know, you could just jump in for 10 minutes. But anyway, in case of the viewers don't know how we met, we met at a pro abortion rally. And obviously there was a lot of dueling sides or fighting each other. I was not, I was just trying to, you know, look into the entertainment, the, the show, just kind of take a look at the way it is. And obviously I think many of my viewers are just happy with the way things are. Now, as far as that initiative goes, I, I just think it's just a way to stir things up. That's all they're trying to do. They're just trying to get votes. They're trying to make certain people look good. But yeah, that's where we met, right? At that abortion event at CSN Cheyenne?
We did. And I always tell people, you know, and you'll never convince me otherwise, you know, rather we call it abortions. I think some of the people there were talking about referring to dead babies, other people were referring to all these different things. You know, however you phrase it, I'm going to say a hundred percent, there's never a doubt in my mind. It's always a woman's right to choose. So do I think that we should be going out there having crazy abortions or having, you know, get pregnant, have an abortion, two for one sale? I don't think either thing. I don't think me, especially as a male, should have any say in what a woman should do with her reproductive rights. Period. Full stop for me.
Fair enough, fair enough. Now, of course, just because it's legal doesn't mean you attempt to do it. Cause that's obviously, it's, I, there's a lot of things
Let's talk about it. I, I think you disagree with me. I love it. Let's talk about it.
Well, I mean, we have to, we have to discourage it, not to make it illegal. And then there's two different things, you know, that's like
I don't, I don't think discouraged is the right word, but I'm on the same lines as you. I think that we, we need to educate people.
Responsibility.
You know, I, I think it's weird though, that there are certain people on the far right side that say, we're not going to teach you about, you know, contraceptions. But we just, you just need to know not to have sex. God's looking at you. But at the same time, you know, we're not going to do anything when you get pregnant because we didn't educate you. So it's like, okay, let's educate you on safe sex practices. At the same time, let's educate you on, you know, what happens in case you get pregnant or not. But then, you know, at that point, if you want to say that it should be not the first option abortion, you know, I'm with you. Let's talk to people about, hey, of these 15 things, abortion's probably number seven, but here's some other options for you. But I can tell you as a longtime foster parents, you know, there are thousands of thousands of kids in the foster care system right now. So it's like, while we're talking and screaming and shouting about, you know, abortion rights and these different type of things, you know, nobody's shouting and screaming about these kids who are sitting in the system with nobody taking care of them.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
It's, uh, cause you were on the, on the radio with Brian Shapiro. Actually, he came to your campaign event from what I know, I think a couple of times. So he, he's brought, he's talked about the foster care system abortion. That's some issue he has talked about. Now, the thing is, is that as, if you don't know Brian Shapiro, Shapiro, he's been on the radio for many years. And he is not happy with a lot of those people, particularly, I don't know if you want to call him on the Republican side, far right, whatever you want to call it, and as well as Donald Trump. Now, of course, I have concerns with Donald Trump. I don't agree with everything he does. But I think that my concern with Brian Shapiro is that Trump got elected because a lot of people in 2016 were not happy with the state of the country. And it's not like, okay, it's, it's sort of like pointing out, which, which, let's compare it to a local issue. It's like, well, the reason why I'm on a, on a vehicle from the strip to the airport is not because I want to, but because that's really the best option I have. There is no other rail service from, let's say, the strip to the airport. So I think people want to change. They voted for Donald Trump in 2016. You know, we had a lot of disgusted Democrats in that primary with Bernie versus Hillary. And then that perhaps would led Donald Trump getting elected. And I just don't think Brian Shapiro, it doesn't seem to, he really talks about it or gets it. But we just weren't happy. And obviously, you know, when previous presidents don't do what they're supposed to do, well, yeah.
So towards the end, I, I agree with what you were saying, the last part of what you're saying. Which is, a lot of people weren't happy with the choice, you know, was Hillary Clinton. So I, or, and then also the fact that, you know, when they said that they wanted something new, you know, Hillary Clinton showed four more years of the same. And we were all screaming for something new. And I think this is why there's such a huge wave that was pro Bernie Sanders. I was one of them, his precinct captains, not first candidate I've ever given money to.
Yeah.
He's my guy. And then we were all kind of hurt when not only did he lose, but then we found out that the Democrats did, took steps to ensure he lost.
Yeah.
Which also kind of hurt. I think
Even here locally, yeah.
Yeah. Trump won because of kind of default. I'll be honest, you know, I think it was a lot of people, I don't think he won because everybody was screaming for change and loved Donald Trump. I think he won because nobody really wanted Hillary Clinton. So a lot of Democrats stayed home. Those are two total different things.
Yeah, yeah. And I think Shapiro needs to talk more about that. I mean, it's just like
We see this in 2020. We saw that when it was Trump versus anybody with a pulse. And we went with anybody with a pulse.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of like, I think it's the same thing this year, you know?
Yeah.
Donald Trump has insulted me as a black man, saying that I, my people come from shithole countries. Donald Trump has insulted me as a veteran, calling our war heroes, you know, you know, losers. He has insulted me and civil rights leaders, you know, he's said different things. I mean, there's so many different things as to why he would never be a great president. And then on top of that, he constantly is having personal issues that he's lying about. So it's like, I mean, if this is our two best choices for our country, we're, we're in a lot of trouble regardless.
And you look back at his reaction to Bill Maher, if you go all the way back in like 2014, 15 with the orangutan thing. And it's like, look, you know, this is why Bill Maher doesn't support you. And Bill Maher is not happy with a lot of the Democrats, the wokeness, the identity politics and all that. So yeah, I agree. He, he definitely has issues. But again, it's like at the end of
But I don't think, I don't think Brian is too wrong on that though. I mean, Brian does absolutely support, you know, Joe Biden, but I, I don't think his support is wrong. If you know that your frontrunner is going to be Joe Biden, and if you know that the frontrunner on the other side is going to be Donald Trump, then your entire job from this point forward is to make sure your guy wins. Would I have liked to have seen other choices? Probably yes. But I, I, you know, I'm, I'm Hunter Kane and I'm running for Clark County Commission. And regardless of, you know, there's a guy on the Republican side, we're also running for car, uh, commission named Tom Wagner. Fantastically awesome human being. If it wasn't for me running, I would be pushing that guy all day long, you know, to be running. And I hope he does win the Republican, uh, the Republican primary. Cause it would be a great challenge because he cares about the community and stuff like that. But you kind of pick
I'm glad you brought, brought him up because I, I, I might be considering interviewing him. But just to wrap up what we were talking about, I think that with the Bernie campaign, and this is with Kennedy and Jill Stein and everybody, I think we all agree the gap between the rich and the poor is outrageously high. And if you look at here in Las Vegas, the casino elites have very high compensation. But I think a problem with the Democrats is they focus so much on other issues so much that that the class issues, kitchen table issues, it's kind of like being tossed aside. And we, we saw that accelerate after the Occupy movement about 10, 15 years ago. And then this is where you can say, well, the financial crisis never got solved. And now we have this new housing bubble and everything that's gotten reinflated. So, but anyway, let's just get into really more of the local issue. So as you know, there has been this organization called Strong Towns. And we started a local chapter. My main issue living here in Las Vegas, it's urban planning. It sucks. It's perhaps the worst in the nation. What, what makes it so horrible, I would point out, is Vegas is the fifth densest urban area in the nation. Now, now this is kind of shocking because people will tell us, well, no, we don't want to live like the way they do in other countries in the Northeast and Chicago. And I'm like, okay, Vegas is the fifth densest urban area. And if you don't know why that is, is because you go to these areas that were built in the last 30 years, especially the new ones. You have like two and three story homes all chopped in together. And then you go in the similar neighborhood in the inner cities across the country. And you have the same lot size and say, hey, well, unlike here, you could walk to the corner store. You could walk to a really good transit service, but you don't have that here. And why? Well, developers are fearing change. You've got codes and regulations, parking minimums. You have standards for how routes and traffic flow should be set up. You know, this is what developers tell me. It's like when you extend Rainbow Boulevard, you often will have the house facing the other side in its own enclosed subdivision. And when you build a strip mall, you have to build an X number of spaces. And then we have all the people crying out, we don't want sprawl. Well, this is because it's the law. The law tells us this is what it is. And nevertheless, we're not seeing much change from the status quo. We don't see an alarm from our current county commissioner. So what can you do to, could you raise an alarm? Could you get rid of parking mandates? You know, could you look at older, more traditional cities and say, hey, we did something that makes more sense?
So I think what I can do is start the conversation.
Awesome.
Okay. So unfortunately, our city planning, our, our county planning and even state level, they all have different codes and regulations that speak to each other. And it's very difficult to do one without the other. So you have some, you know, law in the strip that says, you know, no housing unit can be built where it impedes the view of the strip. And then you have things like in Lone Mountain where it's the same thing, where nothing can be built over 35 feet tall, you know, regardless. So you have all of these like individual rules. Yeah. Which is just kind of like, why are we having 15 different playbooks and not just one? So I think, but it's going to take a conversation with legislators, state legislators, the multiple cities planners, and then also the county planner to be able to come together and say, hey, look, we have the ability, even though it's costly, we have the ability to be, to build down, uh, which is some, what other, you know, desert areas are doing. We also have the ability to build higher. We have the ability to, while we're doing this, also build in, you know, uh, when it comes to green spaces, parks, you know, at a minimum, there are certain things we should be doing. I think there's even laws on the book right now that is stopping us from doing microforesteing. You know, on the rooftops for some of our buildings. And it's just kind of like, why the heck would some old rinky dink law stop us from doing different type of things? Why aren't we creating more art and culture districts, you know, throughout the valley? I would love to go to the Summerlin Arts District, you know, the Henderson Arts District. You know, there's different types of things that we can do. And I think the county commissioners, unfortunately, because there's multiple levels invested in how we build, it's going to start with a conversation, but one I'm willing to have, absolutely.
Absolutely. And, you know, I, I do believe we can double the density of our outward growth without shrinking the percentage of single family homes. Cause I think one of the most common people point out is like, okay, if you want to change the status quo, we have to live less, which is not really true. I, I think that the heart of the issue is the non-residential areas. And this is where you have an office park really separated from a retail strip area. And then you have oftentimes apartment buildings that could be on top of non-residential buildings. So if you, and of course, then you need all that parking for all those cars. So if you reduce that, you may be able to increase, you know, the density and so forth. And then another of hardly issue is the traffic flow, which they're not safe for pedestrians. They're not safe for people who are on a bike. And what we do is rather than separating the fast moving from the slow moving, we combine the two. So it's like a pedestrian is crossing. This happened to me last night twice. Where it was like a half a mile drive, pedestrians are crossing in a 40 mile an hour zone. And then we look at the headlines and we're like, well, all these people are getting killed. And we're having problems with car insurance and gas prices. Well, hello, it's because the system is not working. And this is what brought me here. This is what brought me here to Vegas, by the way, is because you have land and we can build something new. I mean, that's the spirit of this area is to build a project, get it done. And we got the land to do it. Yeah.
I think we need to have a combination of a lot of different things. I have seen very few areas in the valley where they're making, where they're building with, with walkability and bikability in mind. You know, as you're moving out, unfortunately not in the heart of the city, there's a lot more, you know, walk lanes, bike lanes and dedicated areas for just those vehicles. And in fact, I wouldn't, I can't remember what part of town I was in, but they actually made the lanes very, very small purposely to try to dissuade, you know, like big truck drivers and things like that. Most people there had like motorcycles or whatever it was, which is really cool. And then I think I read somewhere in Arizona where they're actually building communities that are driverless. Where everybody there is on like mopeds or scooters or, you know, smaller type things.
Yeah, cul-de-sac, yeah, Tempe.
Say again?
Cul-de-sac, the neighborhood.
The neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. Will you allow that to get approved here? That's the million dollar question, because
So with me, absolutely yes. So you know, the area that I'm running for District C is in the northwest part of town. And it is mainly residential. So how we design things over there is very, very important to me. To include, you know, including in, you know, local businesses, local restaurants, local cafes over, you know, just the same old Mickey D's and Taco Bell everywhere you go with it. And I think that, you know, on the county commission, we'd be able to be able to, to push some of this stuff through. So we can start envisioning that Clark County that we all kind of want to live in. Where we have the green space, where we're not worried about air pollution, where we have safety precautions when it comes to our roads and pedestrians. You know, I think when I was in Deanna Titus's office, they, someone came to a proposal to the office with, I want to call them like bumpers that they would put on the bus stations. I don't know a better way of saying it than that, but they're kind of like bumpers. So if a car did slide or hit or whatever it did, it kind of protected the pedestrians with it. But a lot of that, again, well, it's not my concern. Talk to somebody else. And that's what too many of our politicians do.
Yeah. And, and I think there should be a lot more alarm. You know, one of the transit systems that I proposed, and I went to the RGC before I moved here actually, was personal rapid transit. And they're really working on it around the world, especially in Silicon Valley, where it's like you have your own pod on demand. You don't stop for anybody. It's way cheaper to build. Hopefully that may replace the Teslas on the Vegas loop. Cause so after all
What are your thoughts when it, when it comes to like the light rail system that they want to build from Victorville to here?
You mean the high speed rail?
High speed road, yeah.
Yeah. Ironically, it's one of the few things that this current administration has done right. The, the thing about that is, you know, I am concerned it's going to be a lot like the one in California where it was over budget. And who knows if the funds actually went to the project. But then again, Bright Line has a success story in Florida. And I don't believe it's going to be $400 round trip because they have tickets as low as $50 from Orlando to Miami. And they are obviously selling out very easily, the Bright Line train. I think it's going to be a success. I think it's going to be wonderful that we can shake things up. Considering the fact that I'm, because I have relatives down there. I drive up here and there could be like a truck that blows up in the middle of the highway, which could be making me sitting there for two hours. which could be making me sitting there for two hours. And then I had my flight delay two times in the Burbank airport. And we have a lot of people pointing out that, well, no, this train is going to be a waste of money, a lot of subsidies. I'm like, okay, then what alternative are you talking about? And then you are the one, which I do support this project too. We use subsidies because remember, gas taxes don't fully fund highways.
Yeah.
To fund the Interstate eleven project from here to Phoenix. So there's very little alarm about that. And of course, these arterial routes like Rainbow, Blue Diamond, Saint Rose, Craig, they're funded by tax dollars, they're maintained by tax dollars, which we'll get to that later. But they rarely talk about, you know, you know, they 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 always seem to complain about transit subsidies. It it it's just mind-boggling. And yes, it does cost a lot more than other countries developed. It is overspending compared to what we did decades ago. There's some ways to it, but you have to be fair. This is the thing, it's like a lot of like, I've noticed Republicans seem to fight against it. See, they're not, see, that's the thing, you you can't always jump on the bandwagon of every partisan issue and and mindfully.
Yeah. I'm wondering now, I'm wondering why the heck A they would be against it. And then, do you know, and I'm guessing you probably do, why are we building this in Victorville?
It's to Rancho Cucamonga. So that's forty miles. Yeah, that's the first place. So it's forty miles. That's the city I grew up in for thirteen years. So it's forty miles east of L A. And then from there, you take the metro length, the commuter rail to downtown L A.
So first Rancho Cucamonga, eh, I grew up in Upland, California, and we were by far the better school.
Oh, I did grow up in Christian there. Yeah.
Uh uh Upland is is my is my home is, you know, where I was born.
Yeah, yeah. And I've met, I actually I've met a lot of people who used to live there, have moved here, even from the high school I used to go to. Yeah, because because now this leads me to my other point. Because when we talk about transportation, it's been very annoying to deal with constant road construction. It seems like every route I take, there's road construction everywhere. Do you think they're really doing this because they give a whatever? Or do you think there's just some conflict of interest? What's going on? Uh, yeah.
So I I'm glad you're asking the question. I think um I don't care what the answer is. Um, and the reason I say that is because I, one of the things I would love to see one of our commissioners do is that they go to a lot of these construction companies and say, in addition to whatever is in the contract and stuff like that, you as an individual company will uh be fined for every day that you have cones on the road, that construction is not actively happening. Or maybe the day before or after, or just something that's a little bit different to help encourage them. You know, I've been, I've talked to some people in planning and some people in the construction world. A lot of times when roads are still shut down after a project's already complete, sometimes up to a week, um is just because, you know, and I've talked to them, it's like because we haven't gotten to picking up those cones yet. Or it's because, you know, we're on a time where we're allowed to spend up to two months to do this project, so we're going to take the two months. Or we're allowed to, there's no incentive for them to actually finish and for to clear the roads. Wow. So I would love to be able to see something that we could do to help. You know, off-peak construction, you know, because it's so hot during the day here. So why aren't we using our nighttime for the construction and, you know, just having me in a different shift? You know, why aren't we using prefabricated, you know, materials a lot more than, you know, pouring and stuff like that? There's just, there's got to be something else that we're that we're not doing, so we don't all have to live in this insanity.
Yeah, and also, it's it's been very frustrating because a lot of times it causes delays. Uh if you're like a cab driver, you know, a fare that's fifteen dollars can end up being twenty-five dollars and it can get frustrating. And you look at F one, it it's just on and I will, I will get to that later. But I do believe that if you if you would have built your cities in a more traditional system, like if you look at downtown where, let's say Sixth Street was under construction, you could take Seventh or Fifth. But in this case, when Decatur is under construction, it's not easy to take, let's say Lindell, or whether it is all these other, you know, half a mile secondary collector routes. And then when you go to Jones, that's under construction. So it's like, it 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 it's just can be really, really frustrating. And I and I've noticed that the chance of us getting that is higher. And it's not so high when you go further out. It's it's just kind of shocking, but you know, so you're you're you're.
Not only accountability, I also think that what we should do is integrate some smart technologies. I mean, there is no reason why, you know, I use the Google Maps, sometimes I use Waze. Even if I had to download, you know, a county-produced map, something that will tell me where construction will be at, so I can know and plan to avoid it. But it's the kind of, I'm already, like you said it kind of perfectly, oh, Decatur has construction, let me go down to Jones. That has construction. Okay, let me go down a little bit further to maybe Rainbow. Oh, man, okay, now there's delays over there. But if there is an app that just said, hey, this area is actively under construction, this one's down to one lane, whatever it is, I think it would make me a little bit less frustrated. Even if I have to use the two fifteen to go all around the city just to go two blocks, I'd rather do that than just sit in traffic.
Sure. Let's talk about F one because a lot of people were frustrated. I think there were subsidies or support that was used for that. A lot of people pointed out, yes, it did help the economy, but it created traffic delays. It harmed a lot of small businesses. What's your position in that?
Um, I I kind of agree with our small business owners that um, you know, while it did bring, I guess, a certain level of prestige to Las Vegas hosting one, um, the the upside didn't pay out for those of us that lived here. Um, so there's a lot of businesses that were hurt. Some of them had to shut down because of F one. Um, on top of that, you know, I love to read reports that, you know, with all of these different, you know, F one stadiums, all these different things, our legislators seem to be, you know, getting their campaign coffers filled with a lot of these organizations without making sure to pass that down to us. So even with F one, personally, the county, the 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 cities, somebody could have turned around and said, hey, while this is here, we're going to make sure all the buses are free for traveling for anybody who wants to use it for the inconvenience. Um, and not just those doing F one, but around the city as a whole. You know, they could literally have done a lot more promotion, you know, for shop local businesses here or have the local businesses providing food in the during the event. There's so many different things that could have been done. But again, it's kind of like, eh, it's not our problem.
Yeah, and speaking of self-interest, your opponent, I heard, is has ties to Saudi Arabia. I don't know if that's true, but you have any.
I I will say that I know what you know. Um, not only have I seen all the signs around here, I've seen the video um that's out there about her ties to Saudi Arabia. Um, and then I've also um looked into a little bit of rese- research to find out, oh, okay, you were lobbyist's cool. Okay. And I've kind of just left you there where, you know, I'm I'm glad April told us about this because I didn't even know this. Until April started talking about it.
Can she be pro woman if she's, you know? The thing is, I spoke spoke to her about tax policy and she didn't want to answer my question. But that's another thing because uh the county commission uh voted back in twenty nineteen to raise sales taxes. And we often hear, oh, it's to fund the schools and, you know, we did this with the commerce tax, marijuana, uh all all different types of, you know, taxes that we've we've been through. So my question is, would you be in favor of increasing or even lowering our sales taxes? Because sales taxes are very regressive. And I think what I can agree with a lot of people who vote Democrat or whatever, is that we have a very regressive tax structure in Nevada. Our gaming tax is among the lowest in the nation. That's when you know.
So I I personally would not be a fan of raising our sales tax. Um, what I would like to see, because you know, I always make the joke to some of my Republican friends, you know, I am, I am a Democrat, so there's some kind of tax somewhere I want to create. Um, but there is a tax that, you know, I think that could help fund some of these different programs. And even with me, you know, I'm hoping to create the inaugural Veterans Department for the county. That's going to cost money. Uh, we have no county service or veteran services on the county level, and that's going to do a lot of the programs I want to do with those that are aging out of the foster care system for the things I want to do for those that are, uh, what I call, uh, early adulthood, sixteen and above, and then early childhood, I would want to support in the county. And how I do all of this in my brain is I want to um devise a a fair tax program when it comes to property tax. So, you know, right now, we have property tax that's captured a certain limit. And I want to say after your second home, you're going to be paying a higher margin. And then as you buy more homes, um, the the tax rate increases.
Yeah.
So that by the time you're in your fifth, tenth, fifteenth home, and we're hoping that it's so tax prohibitive that those corporations, those individuals that are just buying up all of these properties.
That's what I was going to, like, so you do have a plan. Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, this is uh pretty interesting. I'm glad you brought veterans because I should bring that up if I go to the next county commission meeting. They're they they need to look into that because they certainly, I I mean, how could you treat the veterans? Like, how could you not have a department for your veterans? It's just absolutely in insane. Let's go down. I I think because we have.
Let me do say real quick on that, just because um we, I am a officer on the Armed Forces Chamber. Um, and one of the things that we're doing right now is building veteran hu- housing in Proust. Um, they've been awarded X amount of lot of land and literally we have people that will have very low co- low cost, no cost housing uh housing for veterans. And then there's another partner that we're actually working with right now, who's out in Proust, who um is pretty much creating tiny homes on existing properties. So if you have a home, you know, those Conex buildings and those different type of prefabricated buildings um that connect into its own gray water system, solar systems, different things like that. So there are things that we can do. There's so much land out there by the VA hospital that we could literally be having housing for our veterans on federal lands that we're helping to protect them. We just need some people thinking outside the box.
And and of course, there's a lot of companies that are getting involved in that. Noticeably, Octable is doing that too, yes. Uh, a lot of people have the uh twenty twenty, early twenty twenties lockdowns and everything mandates. Do you think that they went too far, uh, you know, particularly small businesses that got hurt? You know, because a lot of people also blame that for the inflation crisis that we're in now. What do you think?
So what I do think, and you know, I I definitely want to make clear is we would have a better Clark County if twenty twenty didn't happen because I probably would have won in twenty twenty when I ran for this position initially. Uh, so I blame COVID on, you know, us not being able to campaign and share our stories with great people like you. But um when it came down to, does it hurt? I mean, it hurt everybody. So me to pretend as if it didn't um would just be lying from small businesses to even large businesses um to the individual homes. I mean, my kids, uh at one time, we had eight of my sons had to return back home because they couldn't afford the place that they're in or they couldn't go to work or whatever it may have been. Um, so I think we all struggled through that a little bit, a lot of it.
Commissioner Sickerboom seems like a very sincere person, unlike some, I would probably point out Gibson. One of the things I think we disagree with the most is that if he used county money, correct me if I'm wrong, to give to the UNLV Immigration Clinic. Now, of course, we all agree that, you know, non-citizens, look, they're non-citizen, okay? There has to be some difference in what you get. So do you think that our funds should go to legal aid services for people who are not legally in the country? Because that's one of the things I got really disappointed because it's unfair to my relatives. Okay, they go through the process, they spend their own money. And then all of a sudden, we have people who didn't make the standard or, you know, didn't follow the procedures and they just get support because I don't think that's a good idea, nor I think county money should be used for that. It's like, okay, you show sympathy for them.
I love this.
Yeah, huh?
I lo- I love, you know, when you and I disagree on things. I do, I do. Um, no, I do. Uh, but let me say this. So, you know, the weird thing is, and I tried to challenge a friend of mine with this. So let's just say ten million dollars was sent to UNLV, you know, for, you know, DECA students or undocumented students. Um, my next question I would tell people because everyone's like, well, it's not fair, they shouldn't get it. A, that money is probably allocated for educational resources, so it wouldn't have went to your pockets in any way, shape or form. The second thing I would turn around and saying is, is I think it's better that we utilize money that we have versus having it sit in the account somewhere. And then the third thing I would say is, the American way is not to help those people that pass your tests, it's to help your neighbors. If we have a person that is here who, you know, a lot of our, you know, undocumented students came here with, by no fault of their own, their parents brought them over here. Um, so it's kind of like, we, why should we turn around and punish them because of a mistake that their parent made? The parent broke the law. They didn't.
But it has to be a different reward if they follow the law, because there has to be an incentive for following the law. Because if you don't do that, they, you know, if I have relatives overseas, then what's the point of them, you know, going through the process?
Yeah.
You know.
But everybody makes mistakes. I mean, we have journalists locked up in Russia and all these different places. Hell, uh, that basketball player who had a vape pen who didn't know that she shouldn't have brought it, had to serve years.
I mean, I understand the process is tough. And I understand the process is tough because I know some people took forever for them to become citizenship and 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 that's unacceptable. I mean, if you want to be legal and you meet the requirements and you can be legal, that's one thing. But I'm talking about the ones that, you know, suck through and they have all these dirty ties and all that kind of stuff like that. That's not acceptable. It's like, you know, traffic laws, okay? You know, and I think we should have talked about this earlier. Okay, we don't like traffic lights, you could make things different with a roundabout, but you still have to have traffic laws because even autonomous vehicles have to follow them. It's very simple.
Yeah, but I also don't want to lump everybody together because you said two different things when you just said there, and they're two different type of people. The people that snuck over here, cool, I'm okay with them. If you wanted to sneak over here just because your family is being threatened by the cartels over there, please sneak across that border. Please come over here, we want to help you, we will accept you in this country. But I do also agree that we can't separate them with, as you called them, those dirty people trying to do wrong over here. So if we're talking about the criminal aspect of that, absolutely, we don't want them here. Everybody can agree with that. But the problem is, is that, you know, if you're black or brown, um, it takes twenty plus years for you to legally come in this country. Yet, if you're from one of those wholesome European countries, you know, we will gladly accept you, allow you to overstay your visas. Well, we don't care, we don't mind.
I I don't think I've ever.
So how can we have one standard for one versus the other?
Well, actually, I just saw a map that European countries, like in Japan, you can come in without a visa, but in other countries you do. So it's interesting how this is some of those policies we had seventy years ago are still sort of taking effect. That's that's very interesting. Uh, because now that we brought this up, because we talked about taxes, that and homelessness, because we'll get to that. But I think what my viewers and some people who watch this video have an issue with is we don't want Las Vegas, particularly Nevada, to be like California. Because, oh, that's the state that everybody despises, they're leaving. That's what you get when you vote for Democrats. So what do you think of the way that state is running? And and how would you or not try to emulate that state? Because I can agree, first of all, on the other hand, that the labor laws are stronger because when I've been working here, really, the labor laws are so weak that it's just, you're treated like chewing gum. You know what I mean?
Yeah. I think, you know, California, um, I I love California, you know, it birthed me, so of course it was a great, you know, state. Um, I I do think it has a lot of great things about it. And I also think it has a lot of issues with it. Um, there is no doubt, you know, as much as the 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 Nevadians that were born here want to say, don't Nevada or don't California mind Nevada. Um, Californians are coming over here in droves. There is zero things that you can do to stop Californians to come over here with their California ways and their California ideas and their California beliefs. What we can do is we can see, hey, here's the ideas that worked over there, let's integrate them into us. And then here's the things that work over there and let's avoid it altogether. But I think right now, when you have, you know, droves of Californians coming over here and the Nevadian still stuck in the nineteen seventies because we liked it way back then when the when the mafia was running things and we don't want to change. Well, it's going to change. I mean, I just read that Nellis Air Force Base, uh, it's going to, Nellis Air Force Base is getting rid of plastic bags. So you now have to bring your own bags into like the military installation.
I brought my own bags to stores that don't require it. But I was surprised that H and M does that, actually. That uh, there, it was really interesting.
I mean, these, these things are going to happen here regardless of we want it or not. So what I would say is.
Minimum wage hike, yeah.
Well, if we put in now, you know, uh, renter's protections, then we don't have to worry about all these renter prices are, you know, sometimes doubling. You know, at the end of a year, end of a contract and things like that. If we turn around and put in certain. You know, at the end of a year, end of a contract and things like that. If we turn around and put in certain type of protections now. That we see that are failing in California, I think we'll be better off as a state.
But then this leads me to another topic. It's it's probably the worst in that state. It's been getting worse here and you see this underneath the bridges or underneath. Whatever you see documentary films exposing it, and that is of course the, whatever you want to call it, homelessness or the. You know, crisis of some point of drug use or everything. How would you solve it? What what do you think about it? And would you would have supported the city ordinance to ban camping on the street? That's. That was a controversial one.
So I again, I'm a foster parent, so I know the statistics. Fifty percent of the youth that exit foster care end up immediately homeless. If they don't end up homeless, there's, there's a large percentage that end up in the sex trades. Um that commit a crime that sends them to jail, which is why seventy percent. Of our prison prisoners have once had a stint in foster care system. Like, I know the stats and it deals right around homelessness in my brain. So the first thing that I would say is that we need to have a better ju- do a better job of prevention. I would much rather give you Cyrus a thousand dollars for you to fix your car so you can go to your job so you don't lose your housing. And end up homeless. That thousand dollars upfront is a lot easier than paying tens of thousand dollars in food programs and medical programs and. Housing and all these other different types of.
That's interesting, yeah.
So that's step one. We need prevention. Um hugely, what we need to do is, you know, everybody knows and nobody seems to know what to do about it, is we have a lack of mental health care services here. And drugs, um uh uh rehabs and uh uh programs like that, alternative programs. So I think if you look at the number of people that are homelessness, I which I was homeless once upon a time. Um you know, a lot of times it's, they turn to drugs out of desperation. Uh which leads to other different type of things, and now they're stuck in a cycle that they can't get out of themselves. And when you asked about. Um the the city ordinance, absolutely not. Um in fact, if you look back, I am on record in there, um openly opposing. Um Carolyn Goodman and um the city council for passing that. I've worked with them in a lot of their homeless programs. We were making great strides on different type of things that we wanted to do. And then I kind of take it very personal. Like I just said, I was homeless once upon a time. And had it been illegal for me to sleep on the streets. And I would have gotten tickets or I would have went to jail or I would have done that, I wouldn't have been able to go into the military service. And the military service is kind of what saved me from being homeless. So how many more things are we putting in people's way by now creating criminals out of people who have no place? Like, it it drives me insane that we won't house you, feed you or clothe you, but we'll lock you up, which does all of those things. Why aren't we spending the money?
Are you sure? Open your mind. I I I I I am just speechless because that that leads me to another thing, crime and safety because. Lot of people are concerned that, okay, did we hear calls of defund the police and. Crime is going up or it's just the economy is making people uh, you know, doing things that are very unpleasant. Just a quick uh. Explanation about what do you think about what's going on? How would you solve it?
Yeah, so I'm trying to remember, you know, back in my. Uh my psychology class, there there's a hierarchy of needs. And I'm trying to remember who created it, but they talk about, you know, when the basic needs are taken care of. How it's easier to get to the next needs and so on and so forth. I i- it's it's all of the above. Um the crime is actually better today than it was five years ago. Um nobody can see that, though. Why? Because not only is I do I see crime around me. Um I'm being prolifer- proliferated through my media, through my apps of only the bad things because the good stories don't sell. On top of that, I noticed that it costs twice as much to buy milk. I've noticed that my job doesn't want to pay me more money. My kids are doing lockdown drills. It's kind of like, there's just so many different things and I'm uncomfortable and because I'm uncomfortable. I'm angry with everybody and everything. Nobody's doing it right. I don't care if Donald Trump was in office right now, everybody would be hating him. I don't care if Bernie Sanders was in office right now, everybody would be hating him. We're uncomfortable. As a as a country, and it's all making us feel everything is messed up and horrible. So of course, we're all looking for something new, something changed, something different, something this, because I'm uncomfortable. Please, somebody just help.
But a lot of people.
As commissioner. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, a lot of people claim there was decriminalization. I don't exactly know, but go ahead.
You say, say again about decriminalization? Sorry.
Yeah, there were some laws that were kind of decriminalized from felony to misdemeanor. I I believe that's what happened. I mean, you know, it's.
To to reduce crime?
Well, no, to kind of reduce the penalties and then that incentivizes.
Gotcha. So one of the things that I'm hoping that they do is that they reduce a lot more of these felonies to misdemeanors or less. Um.
Which ones?
You know, it's weird because. I could probably think of one or two and I'll I'll try to right now. Um but I do know that everything is a felony now. Um I vividly remember ge- getting in fights in school. And of course, the black and brown kids, you know, get immediately arrested and now they have a juvie record. You know, the white kids might get suspended and or expelled, but you know. I've seen kids get felonies for getting in fights in school. I've seen people get felonies for doing minor things that I vividly remember growing up doing. And that's just kind of weird to me that the same people saying, you know, life was way back, uh way better back then. Are now the same people saying, well, this person made me uncomfortable, so lock them up and throw away the key. It's like, if you remember way back then, you know, as you're saying, the seventies and eighties, even though I wasn't born in the seventies. Uh I think you will, you know, understand that. Times were a little bit simpler, but that's because there were less laws. So it's kind of like you can't have a million laws and then wonder why people are breaking them all the time.
I I feel like there's too many laws, but I feel like the 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 laws that are very important are not being enforced, whether it's. Basically civil or whether it's economic uh laws that were supposed to, because you know, we a lot, there was some good policy. That came from the progressive area hundred years ago, and then a lot of those are not being enforced or. They've been ignored like Sherman Antitrust Act and other things. But again, that's a whole different story. I guess my final and perhaps the most important question is, Vegas has grown a lot in our lifetimes. And the planning has not all been that great, but that also means local government structure has not been updated. People have talked about breaking up CCUSD. I'm talking about breaking up the county, because this is a one-county monopoly where you have. Pretty much like runs the whole show than any metropolitan area in the US. So it's not like, okay, you don't like LA County, you can live in Orange, Ventura, San Bernardino. Orange is an alternative to San Diego. So w- would you be in favor of restructuring the county? Not or either just breaking it up, like making Laughlin in a separate one with. You know, prim and then you have Mesquite in a separate one, and then you could have the cities become their own city-county combo. Would you favor of adding more county commissioners? Because. You know, the problem with these large institutions, then we get the HOAs seem to have more power and we have more dependency on them. And there's a lot of horror stories about them. So what do you make of that?
So I think my, you know, to be fair with you, um my, I I don't have. A well thought out answer. I'm going to tell you my answer from the foster parent perspective here or the parent perspective. Um I've talked to a lot of people about breaking up CCSD and um I'm against it. And the reason that I'm against it is because. Um when it comes to our our county, let's say that you have a Summerland district and you have a this district. If there are specialty schools, every broken up subsection couldn't have that specialty school. So if my, I have a kid that's going to, you know, the Performing Arts Academy, do I have to live in that specific district? Or we bust back over or kind of different type of things? This is why I'm also kind of against a lot of different chartering everything. It's because I only have kids that are higher level of care. Special needs kids are all of my kids.
Yeah.
Some of them get in fights, some of them have behavioral issues, some of them are excelling in different type of areas. And with the school system as it is right now, you have to take me regardless of where it lives. And I don't want that to change around where all of a sudden, now you have the option to say, well, we don't offer that in this school districts. Go talk to the Paradise School District. Go talk to the Diamond, you know, School District or whatever.
So but do you think we should keep things the way they are? Because they're not working.
No, but I think.
So you want change, that's good.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, so what about the county commission? I mean, would you be in favor of adding county commissioners? Uh you know, from seven to eleven a- and and at least getting the far out neighborhoods like Laughlin or. Mesquite out of it. I mean, these places are ninety miles away and and it's like, you really don't need to depend on us. For services or even yet, you know, forty miles away, you know, I, let's say if I were to develop my own master plan area, let's have our own separate counties. District or whatever, because, you know, we don't need to depend on forty miles away, you know, let's have our own autonomous areas, you know. New areas or really far out areas because. You know, I I I understand that, I understand that like North Town and 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 this city or whatever. They can share, but you know, some areas.
Um I I think it's worthy of conversation. Um I I don't know, you know, my initial reaction would be. Um maybe, you know, you can understand where you would have maybe a rural commissioner versus a urban commissioner. Um at the same time, maybe not, because if you have too many, you know, you don't want to have too many hands in the cookie jar. So it's kind of like, you know, what's that old saying? Too many chefs, not uh too many chefs, not enough uh. Tasters or whatever it was, you know, growing up. Um I think that what we need to do though is we need to have more. Um departments for sure. So like the Department of Family Services encompasses so much that we need to have a Department of the Courts. The Department of Fostering, a Department of this. And it's the same thing when it comes to housing, you know, having a department over HOAs. Having a department over, you know, specific lease, um. Yeah, uh uh both commercial leases and residential leases, you know, having different departments that their entire job. Is to go after predatory in that field or to go after those that are going bad or, you know, hurting our. Community, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
I'm I'm not sure what eleven commissioners would do that seven can't.
Well, just one person would just have more influence over one, you know, it's just why you. I mean, the the thing is that in this area, we don't even have a small city of like thirty thousand people, a whole lot. So it's like one person.
Yeah.
Uh has a larger impact over those elected officials. I think that is where the heart of the issue is, and you see this in other metro areas all across the country. But I want to just wrap it up and, uh you know, because you talk, you know, I've had some favorable views of John Lee. I do too. When, when I first had a chance to talk to him, he seemed to really like me because he saw me speak in public at the. Las Vegas Convention Business Authority meeting, and I think that's a. That's a body a lot of people should go to and speak because we're able to meet a lot, a lot of people within the RTC, a lot of those other boards and. I'm sure if you get elected, you would have some interest in going into those boards because they have a lot of oversight. Yeah. You you know, and that's the thing, because you, we all seem to like John Lee and and we all seem to kind of like cross party lines, which is kind of interesting. So I was gonna ask you about the campus violence, but I don't know if we have time or if you just want to give me a thirty seconds. You don't have to. You want to talk about the protests or.
I can give you thirty seconds.
Well, it's just it.
Um let me.
This is not a county issue, so. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um it deeply affects me. Um both my son and I were at um UNLV during the campus shooting in December. Um so violence on campus absolutely is important to me. Um. I I would say this for the protests that are going off and all around the country. Um that eventually will hit here in a big way, I'm sure of it. I stand with you.
Okay.
Um I stand with your right to protest. Um your message, I may not agree with. Um but like some of the other professors that are out there saying, you know, I want to teach hopefully all thirty six of my sons. Um I want to be able to teach them, stand up for what you're saying, say it loud, say it in a public way that other people can hear it also. Um like I said, I may not agree with the message, but I absolutely agree with the sentiment of stand up and protest as much as you can. As as long as you can do it, do it.
Cool. Well, if folks want to help you out in your campaign, your movement. Now, before uh I I I was. Before I get to that, actually, I have to point out, wow, what an amazing conversation. I really enjoyed our talk that we had together. And 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 I really wish you the best of luck. Uh I will really try to help you out. I really enjoyed this conversation, very eye opening. So if folks want to help you out, make a difference, then they can obviously donate to your link, which I have a couple of times at HunterKane.com, correct?
Yes, uh electHunterKane.com.
Okay, I like Hunter Kane, it's not easy to remember.
And A, I I thank you very much for your donations and, you know, I love these conversations that we have because we don't have to see eye to eye. We can have civil discourse.
Absolutely. And then how else can they help? Will there be more campaign events around town? And uh you know, in the canvas, I mean, could you explain it? Also explain where is your district located? Because. I I think we should have talked about that sooner. It's in the northwest uh section of the valley, right?
Northwest, what I always tell people, if you use Charleston and the ninety five freeway as your. As your map, and then as it goes up to the northwest, it's everything in that area. So Summerland um north, Lone Mountains, Centennial Hills. Over to Indian Springs, all the way until it hits the Perump border. So that's including Sky Canyon, Mount Charleston, so everything kind of northwest. Uh the best way to be able to help, go to electHunterKane.com or on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. Um TikTok, you can actually search up electHunterKane also. Uh we have plenty of events. We have listening sessions to trivia contests to uh tomorrow. Um uh the Saturday, we're literally having a Star Wars for May the fourth. Um so we're having a Star Wars marathon. So if you're in town or if you, if you're not busy, Cyrus, come on over also. You know, come join us.
Yeah.
Be a lot of fun.
Yeah, eh eh. I'm just thinking, if I have time. What I would like to do is canvas and I'd like to get some flyers, distribute them and then. Offer them to select homes that uh are likely going to vote for the commission race and maybe have some second thoughts about. You know, your opponent, Axel Roth, because uh you really have to make sure that people know who she is and. And more importantly, if people are electing people that would work for them and not just a handful of. I guess you can get the picture. So anything else you'd like to talk about? And if you have any questions for me, as a matter of fact, or the audiences. Just to keep in mind.
Um no question this time around, but if you have me on again, I'll make sure Ashley to come load it with a bunch of different type of questions. Um the only other thing that I want to tell people is, you know, I'm very, very approachable. Um my email, you know, my campaign email is info@electHunterKane.com. My personal cell phone number, which I give out everywhere, area code seven two five two one two zero five six zero. Um I'm very, if you want to have a conversations, we don't have to agree. I love to debate. I love to talk. Please let me know.
Absolutely. And I think that's what's really the problem is that we have been using these labels and. Dividing factors and everything. It's just like, we don't get things done. But I think that's the whole point is so that we don't get things done. And it's not just politics, it's a whole list of other issues. We don't get anything done. Uh even urban planning, nothing really gets done. People are unaware. And the problem just basically. Whether it's true, it prevails. Then you might as well argue this is how those handful of people lap their way to the bank because. They they depend on, yeah, they do.
And you can kind of predict who is planning on, who's going to win in the primaries of every race. So I'm trying my best to, you know, shake up the status quo, but if you look across a lot of these different races. People are just, we we know who's going to win, who does the status quo, who's not going to. Not going to go too far in any one direction, you're just going to toe the party line. It's unfortunate.
I hear you. Yeah, i- i- it's just like I pointed out, I I I I just don't think that. We went to that abortion event, but that kind of discourse of others were having together. Uh it's not certainly the way I would have done it, and 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 it's just, you know, but it's interesting because. Both sides were debating each other. When I talk to people on other particular issues that I disagree with, I'm just ignored and they just walk away from me. And this is where you can argue that they probably know what they're doing is pretty shady. And 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 so that's the thing, because I think like abortion is something where both sides have some legitimate points, but. On some other issues, it seems like one side seems to get it better than others. You know what I mean? It's it's like, I think.
Few times like that.
I I have to put out like, this is where a lot of viewers agree, the issue that I think the progressive. I don't, uh uh you can call the neoliberal Democrats, but the progressive left gets. I don't, uh, you can call the neoliberal Democrats, but the progressive left gets it best is the income inequality. But I think the issue that on the other side gets it better is immigration. You know, because. You know, we've talked about this before, and then, and then this is where it happens, is we get a large pool of people who have mixed views. And then we just elect the people, not because we agree with them like eighty or more percent, but it's just because simply the best we have. And then we don't even have like other alternative options, and hence. The can is just kicked down the road, it's just very interesting to see, and then it's like, well, why do we have these two people? That just keep running the system over and over again every two to four years? Well, because that's just the way it is, and, you know, and, and, and that's just the thing, but. At least we do have ballot propositions that's coming along, and you did kind of, was eye-opening about the range choice voting. Uh, which, by the way, both.
And then we're gonna have.
Yeah, or have issues with.
We have people like you and people like your listeners coming out to help canvas with us. I mean, we're gonna win this thing, and then you're gonna put, you know. Um, someone who's used to working with the people in power for the first time.
Do you have signs around the Centennial area? Did you put any signs?
We have elected. We have elected not to do signs. Um. So we, uh, we're doing a few other different things, one of the things that we're still going to be doing is we're thinking about correction, no street signs. Um, we do have lawn signs, and then we do have, um, signs that we're gonna be putting up on the freeway entrance exits. That'll be going up here pretty soon.
So that's still, you know, getting the word out, okay, but I'm gonna help with that, I'm gonna help with that.
We're gonna have massive other projects undertaking here pretty soon, that are just for.
Election Day is when?
June eleventh, so your early mail, your, your, you should receive your mail ballots sometime between May eleventh and that. Two weeks following, early voting is May twenty-seventh, and then the actual election is June eleventh.
Okay, and then who can vote for you, just the people who live in the district?
Just the people that live in District C, um, but I always tell people, even if you don't live in that area. You know, still go on the social medias, like, share it, you might have friends, family members that live in that area that will see you promoting me, and then wanna do so the same.
Because if you get in. There is gonna be a, there's gonna be significant change in the county commission, and we know that one person can really have a domino effect. Right, so if you are a Republican, and just think, oh, well, he's one of those, he's, um, he's not gonna get my vote. What do you say about that last question?
Um, I, I say. Look me up in the Democratic Party. Uh, I, I am not the favorite of the party, I am not one of their beloved childs. Um, and in fact, one of the reporters was mentioning how I appear to have more Republicans who have donated to my campaign than. Democrats. Um, but the reason is not because, you know, one part or the other is, I'm friends with literally everyone. I don't care about your party politics, you know. Chances are, if you meet me in person, we get a chance to talk, you know, go to a bar, have a beer kind of person.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna love me by the end of time, so.
Oh, that, 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 yeah, that's where I wanna go, the bar in Tenay. Yeah.
Do it, but I mean, I also tell people.
District, yeah, yeah, I, I.
Look how many other.
When we visited in town.
How many other candidates are pushing for question three? Question three is literally gonna say both Republicans and Democrats can vote during the primary for any candidate. There is not too many people out there doing that.
All right, well, thank you so much, great pleasure, and I look forward to hearing from you soon.
Absolutely, we're gonna hit you up about that canvassing.
Great pleasure, thank you. I'll see you.